The participants, I'm calling this meeting to order at 2:05. I wonder if you could clerk today, JP. The participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic as a result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12, 2020, allowing us to do so. And present today are my fellow appointment member, committee member JP Kuzynski, also county council member Omar Gomez is here, and Kate De Silva, one of our mayoral appointees has joined us. So, great. Now we have no one else from the public, so I don't think there's anyone from the public wants to say anything that's not on our agenda. They're welcome to now. I'm glad I didn't say that earlier when we had a big crowd of people that weren't real people. So, let's go over Kate's Kate's confirmation. Let me pull up the questions. I'm just a little. We have these. Do you have the questions pulled up? No, I sent them yesterday, but.
Sorry, I apologize. I do not have them.
Okay, just a second. I'll get them. Sorry about that. We sent them yesterday in email.
This is an entirely new setup with specific questions. Generally, we had done more of a free-form interview and asked questions. So this is really kind of one of the first times that we're introducing a new system in its entirety.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna pull it out of my sent folder. I sent them to you in the email too, but, okay, I got it. All right. So, hi Kate, thank you for joining us today. You've been recommended to be appointed to the Commission on Disability for the city of East Hampton. So today we look forward just to getting to know you. This is a great opportunity for us to get to know everyone who's involved in the city and just to hear about, you know, what you're gonna, what you're planning to bring to this committee. So the first question is, why are you interested in serving on the Commission on Disability?
Sure. Thanks for having me. It's really a few reasons. I mean, the first reason is my background, which I'm the Executive Director of Valley Educational Associates, and we're a nonprofit here in Western Mass. We serve adults with developmental disabilities. And I've been here at the agency since 2004. So.
What's the name of the agency again?
Valley Educational Associates.
Okay, cool.
And we just work actually very similar to Riverside Industries.
Okay.
You know. And in June, my husband and I bought a house in East Hampton.
Welcome.
So we're new residents of East Hampton, and I love the town and wanted to get more involved, and I'm part of the East Hampton Facebook group. And Angelique had posted that there was an opening on the commission for disability, and it just sounded like a perfect opportunity for me to get more involved in the town and kind of use the skills and knowledge that I currently have to do that.
Great. Where did you move from? Just curious.
Oh, we were in Holyoke. I've been in Western Mass my whole life, and we'd been looking at houses for a while and decided it's our first home and decided that East Hampton was a perfect spot.
Well, welcome. Thanks. You kind of answered this already, but you can elaborate a little more. In what ways do you see yourself being able to contribute to this committee in terms of your professional and personal experience, your perspective and your skills?
Sure. So at VEAA, we serve adults with developmental disabilities, and a lot of that work is getting our folks out into the community to enjoy their communities and interact with members of the community, and also employment services for those folks as well. So my perspective, although it's mostly programmatic in terms of serving folks, I'm just really interested in how we interact, how the community kind of provides spaces for people with all different types of abilities, and how we can better make areas of public spaces accessible for everyone. And then I'm just very interested in being involved with that part of it. So that, and I think also just in terms of personal experience, I do have a lot of background in being on board, different boards, Board of Directors. I've been a human rights committee coordinator. I've been involved in that type of meeting space for quite a while. And also in my job, I'm very familiar with state laws and regulations that surround Americans with Disabilities Act, for example. So I think I could also bring some of that knowledge to the committee as well.
Great. And what are ways you engage with the East Hampton community right now? And that could be like, anyway, like you said, Facebook or volunteerism, school involvement?
Not a ton of in-person.
Well, it's been a pandemic.
Right now. We've, you know, we moved in in June in the middle of a pandemic, so it's been challenging. Probably mostly the Facebook. You know, we've had to have some work done on our house or different things, so I just kind of like to reach out and get local. I like to keep everything local, so you know, finding people in the community to support. I don't have any children, so there's no school involvement in that area. But I walk the dog and talk to neighbors and kind of meet people that way. So not too much involvement yet, but I'm looking forward to things starting to open up and, you know, getting back into the community.
Do you have any follow-up questions, JP?
Well, it's great you're here. It's great you're getting out there, shopping local. We love to see that. And we all are hoping that we're able to get out there more and more. And I just wanted to say, I think the knowledge of the laws and regulations with the American Disabilities Act will be important, I think, to the Commission on Disability and also a resource to the entire community. So it's great to know that you're there. I have this slice of expertise in this particular area. Whirling around in my brain is kind of a random, a random thought about about disabilities and access and wondered, just if I may ask, is there any particular concern about public meetings and disabilities at this time? Haven't had much of an opportunity to discuss the subject. I know usually you're talking about physical disabilities and getting into buildings and into places and recreation and housing. But I don't know if there might be these particular disabilities that we're kind of missing because of learning Zoom, and some of us have computer abilities, and some of us could be improved on computer ability, so.
That's interesting question, because when my agency, we had to shut down last March when everything kind of ramped up, and we transitioned into offering virtual services for our folks. So our day program kind of went online.
Wow.
Discovered pretty quickly, there's lots of gaps in terms of what people have access to. So you would think meeting virtually would make it easier for people, but we discovered a lot of our folks, the online meeting options didn't work for them, or they didn't have the equipment, or they didn't know how to operate it. For some folks, it's too distracting to have like all the little, I mean, it's distracting for me sometimes to have all the little boxes pop up. So I, and I don't have any solutions necessarily, but I think just keeping in mind that not everyone is at the same level when it comes to the virtual technology. And some folks with developmental disabilities especially have problems and concerns with the stimulation of being in front of a computer screen. And then when you try to switch that over to like a telephone conference, there's issues with keeping people's attention. So it's, there's no perfect solution for everyone, but I guess just kind of being patient with each other and folks as we kind of figure out how to navigate it together. Yeah.
I, I'm excited. We got to hear from Angelique recently. She came to the council and talked about what the Commission on Disability does, and it's just really great to know they're there. I'm looking for ways for there to be more, you know, less siloed. So as a programmatic person, thinking about how the Commission of Disability can play a role whenever we have a new project, that there's like the Commission of Disabilities at the table, kind of with that lens. I think it'd be really great, because sometimes we find out about things after the fact, like, oh, shoot, this isn't accessible to this group, you know, to this population. And it would just be really nice. I have a background in online learning design, so I had to do a lot of universal design on the upfront, and was always talking about the importance of designing from the beginning universally, so you're not retrofitting. So I think like as a city, it would be great to have more of a kind of formalized or automatic way that when something's being initiated, some kind of physical project or online, you know, online project that we, you know, we can, we reach out to you guys, you either at the table, someone from your, the commission, because I think it's really important to have that lens what we do. So just keep that in mind, you know, that that's something I'm looking for from the commission.
That's great. Yeah, I think too with different types of disabilities, a lot of, you know, physical disabilities are easier to see. They're just acknowledged maybe a little bit more frequently, but folks who have different like developmental disabilities that you can't necessarily. It's important to still include those folks in the, in the planning and discussion. So that's exciting to hear.
Cool. Well, are we ready? You want to make a motion, JP?
I will move to appoint, recommend the appointment of Kate De Silva to the Commission on Disability.
And I second that. So, vote. I, okay. So we've unanimously will be recommending your appointment to the full council. So how this works is just, we also like inviting people here, so you just kind of learn how the city government flows. So the mayor appoints you, it comes to our committee, we recommend or don't recommend. And to the full council, and then the full council votes on your, we present, you know, our recommendation, and then the full council votes on April 21st. And at that point, when you'll likely be confirmed, the mayor, the mayor's office reaches out to you and says, you know, congratulations, and then they move forward from there. So it kind of goes through this little train.
Great.
Yeah. So, so thanks for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. I'm very excited.
You know, once we're out in the streets, hopefully we'll see you out and about too.
Yeah, definitely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me. Hi. So we have that. Scott was going to join us as well. I'm gonna just text him because just because I'd like to be able to vote on him today. So I, so we have her approved. Then we have Scott Redman. And so this is like one of those cases where like what we want to do as a committee, he did fill out an application and he has a letter. So it answers most of our questions, but he was gonna come today, but he's not here. So, you know, I know he's a Realtor, so you know how real estate is. Who knows where, what calls you at what time, so.
Absolutely.
But I think we could.
What do you suggest? It is an important position. Being the assessors office.
Yeah. We could just have him, we could post one to our next meeting, or unless he like, yeah, I guess that would be the only way. Oh, he's here now. He's here now. But we could talk about in general what we would want to do. Hi, Scott.
Well, that's not a good way to start. Lindsay knows. I had it in my calendar, and then I'm here at the office trying to, never mind. Anyway.
It's okay. We just, we just, we were waiting on you because we just finished with the other candidate.
Okay, good.
We were just moving to you. We were just like, well, should we, what should we do? So, um, because we want to kind of have a consistent process. So like, you know, we wanted to make, so anyway, you're here, so we can.
Megan, just wanted to remind you, we are in recorded meeting.
We are in a recorded meeting, so don't be scared about, you know, just kidding. I don't know. That was a joke. There's no you know who. All right. So Scott Redman has joined our meeting. And you said, you got the questions, so we'll just ask them here. And this is just like, we've kind of incorporated asking consistent questions to every candidate, and what we found, especially in inviting candidates to our meeting, is it's a really great opportunity for us to learn about people engaging with the city, and I think just, you know, and then for, also for people joining the city to, and I know you've been on the committee before, but learn the process, because it's kind of a, you know, you put your little application in, and then it's like, all of a sudden, someone calls you. So we're trying to educate people on the process as well. So the mayoral and the appointment to us, and we decide whether we want to recommend or not to the full council. So why are you interested in serving on the Board of Assessors?
To be honest with you, it was probably about two or three years ago, I started making some applications to just be on, to serve in some, in some capacity. Since I, you know, for the last 20 years, any place I've lived, I've always sort of done some volunteer work or sort of gotten myself involved in the community. And now that I'm up here, I wanted to do the same thing, and I thought, great. I looked at the list of available boards and positions, and I made a couple of requests, and I just, and then they weren't approved, or they didn't, they were already filled. And then it was back in, I believe, early January, Peter Davies called me and mentioned that, you know, there was going to be an opening on, on the board, and he was like, you know, I think you'd be a great fit for you, and, you know. And so I thought, well, that'd be wonderful. I would love to help serve and contribute. So that's how that came about. And I've been wanting to do something, and this is an opening, an opportunity, and I thought, well, great. I'm being invited, and it kind of works with, you know, the skill sets that I already have. So it felt like the right place at the right time.
Great. Cool. And what ways do you see yourself being able to contribute to this board in terms of your professional, personal experiences and your perspective, your skills, et cetera?
Well, I've lived in East Hampton now since 2015. I've owned two houses there, and I'm also a real estate agent, as you know. So working with clients all the time, going out into properties, I have a really everyday working knowledge of houses and values and condition, and, and know when these, you know, requests for abatements come up. It's like, oh, yes, I've seen that house, or I know where that house is, and I've, so I have a little bit of a working knowledge based on, on what I do for everyday work. As far as the first part of your question was, I apologize.
No, that was it. Basically, what way do you see yourself being able to contribute?
Yeah, it just, it feels like this is like, wow, a perfect kind of fit of wanting to be able to go ahead and contribute, and it's something that I work with every day anyway.
And what ways are you engaged, what ways do you engage with the East Hampton community? Volunteerism, meetings, school, social media, school involvement, et cetera?
This would be the first thing, actually. I mean, other than, you know, just connecting with my, with my neighbors and friends that live there, I've, I haven't, like I said, I had tried in the past to go ahead and, and see if I could get onto any of the boards, and they just, there just wasn't the right opportunity then.
It doesn't have to be formal engagement. Weren't you on the Cultural Chaos Committee and?
That's true. Thank you for reminding me of what I've done.
Haven't you hosted like events for city candidates in your home?
That's, yes, yes. Thank you for prompting me, Lindsay. I appreciate that. So yes, back in, I believe it was 2016, I was on the Cultural Chaos Committee, which was a great experience. And then, yeah, I've gone ahead and I've, I reached out to Lindsay when she was running for city council, offered my space when I was living over at East Works to do a candidate meet and greet. And then I also, at my house, when I was living on Clark Street, I had another candidate, Owen Zerrit, came by and met neighbors and hosted an event there for that. And.
School, in the school, sorry.
Yes. And then there's also when we were, when they were trying to get the financing and the funding passed for the new school, I was working with Lindsay and the gentleman from Williston on kind of getting the information out to the public about what this tax increase would, would mean. So I was helpful in that respect as well. So, thank you, Lindsay.
Good to have someone help you out.
Yeah, a whole prompt back there. I mean, it's interesting, because sometimes you just, you just do, you just forget about the ways that you have contributed when it's not, you know, when it's not something that's.
Like a formal, yeah.
More formal, where it's just like, oh, this whole thing here, that little thing there. It's like, I wouldn't have thought to say, yeah, you hosted a candidate forum or something more, more minor.
I mean, we found, I think, that most people that step up to sit on a committee or board are already involved in the community. It could just be meaning like they go to all the Mill Pond concerts, and you know, that's a way of contributing. That's a way of contributing. We're going to the breweries. Any other questions, JP, or thoughts about?
I think you've explained your involvement quite well. I feel very much informed about that. Scott, I know we've had the opportunity to work together, and you've been very methodical and thorough in your work and presentations, and I think you've done a good job representing the people that you have interacted with, and I've been involved. So I think, you know, certainly professionally, you've come with the highest recommendations. I do have a question about the assessors office, and that was, and I think being a Realtor is an important asset to working on the Board of Assessors. I didn't know if you thought, how you thought you'd be able to balance having at least two Realtors on the Board of Assessors at the same time. I think when you get two or three, one has to, how do you feel about that?
To be honest with you, they've already, and I don't know if this is, I hope it's appropriate, but they've, they've already invited me to, you know, sit in on a couple of their most recent meetings to just, of course, I can't vote on anything, or, but it's just been nice, right? It's been nice to sort of. And I've worked with Peter Davies on real estate transactions before, and in the same thing that you just said about me, it's, it's always been a really great professional relationship. I also served on the, on the RAPV Government Affairs Committee, and Peter was the chairman of that committee. What's been interesting with these last two meetings that, that I've been involved on is I'm incredibly impressed with the depth of knowledge that Peter Davies has. I mean, it's just, it's incredible, and I feel like I've already learned quite a bit. I don't feel like, I don't know if there'd be any kind of a conflict with having two real estate agents on there. I think Peter and I have always worked really well together. We respect each other, and certainly already knowing his intimate knowledge, I think is just going to be incredible. But I don't, I, for me personally, I don't see that, that there'd be any problem with having, working with Peter or having another real estate agent on there. I don't think that there's any professional conflict for me.
And I didn't, I didn't think that there, that there was. I just was asking the question to elicit your thoughts, and I think you've answered the question quite admirably. I, I think, if I'll throw my two cents in, that if it's important to balance the public's interests, if you have people from the same profession serving in a particular role on a, for example, the Board of Assessors with two Realtors, or three real estate agents, it's important, just, I think, to be cognizant of that fact, and to step back as, as we try to be fair with all people as they present their issues. So I think, I think it's, there's kind of an extra step in that process. And sometimes there are hard decisions, and you'll make them. And sometimes they'll, they'll be easy and quite clear. So you'll have fun for sure. And I'm thrilled to see that you've attended some meetings early. And it's always nice that people are well-informed, are beginning to be well-informed about the subjects, and I agree with your assessment, people's knowledge, so. Welcome aboard would be my hope. To move, to approve Scott Redman and make the recommendation for his appointment to the Board of Assessors.
And I second that. All in favor? I, I, okay. We've just voted, we unanimously voted to recommend your confirmation to the full council. So that's what, just so you, that's how the process works next. We present our recommendations at the full council meeting April 21st, and then the full council votes on it. And after that, once you are confirmed or not confirmed, the mayor's office reaches back out to you, and you take it from there. So thanks for joining us today, Scott, and thank you for, you know, being part of the fabric of the city of East Hampton.
Thanks so much. Both of you.
I just wanted to say to Scott, feel free to continue with 10 meetings.
Yeah, it's, it's really helpful, because I mean, like, the first meeting, I was like, okay, I don't really know what's going on here at all, but, so it's good to like, you know, get this repetition under my belt a little bit.
Hi. That's good. He popped in, you know. And I, and I've also like been cognizant too, and I'll just say this on the public record, is that um, you know, there is, there definitely is, when you're doing these kinds of conversations, like a bias towards, like, obviously, I know his background, I know him, so I was, you know, I prompted him, and I don't know, you know, that feels okay until there's someone here that we don't know, and I can't help out in that way, but you know, I'm just saying this out loud, it's just a moment of reflection and wanting to be, you know, fair to all of our people that come before.
I will, since you brought it out on the table, I will say, listen, we all come from varying perspectives. We all know certain people and don't know others. And I think it's important for us to be cognizant of that, and it certainly is reflected that you are. And I wouldn't feel bad necessarily in prompting Scott in certain ways, because you know him, and he's continuing to discuss the subjects. I'll put that out.
I think Omar left before the party probably wants to hear, but it doesn't matter. I mean, he'll see at the full council. I shared that letter with you. Were you able to read it, JP?
I was not able to get to it.
Okay, I'll share my screen now. So basically, to catch you up in our last meeting, Erica and I voted together to recommend this rule change to the full council, and I will share my screen so you can see what it is. Okay. So I'll read it here. I said, dear members of the East Hampton City Council, the members of the appointments committee have been working toward creating a vetting process that is fair, consistent, the members of the Appointments Committee have been working toward creating a vetting process that is fair, consistent, and transparent, but also allows counselors the freedom to ask questions that are pertinent to the role in the candidate. We are proposing addition, in addition to Rule eleven H that describes a process after the Appointments Committee receives a mayoral appointment. This process prescribes the communication to be sent to the candidate and a list of questions. However, follow-up questions may be asked by city council members. And then this would be the, this is the current rule here in, in the books. Review and recommend confirmation or rejection of mayoral appointments to all multi-member boards and committees as well as department heads pursuant to section six, two ten of the Home Rule Charter. The recommended addition is a sub-bullet. All mayoral appointments to multi-member boards and committees will receive the following notification via email or postal mail from the Appointments Committee. Follow-up questions may be asked of candidates either in person or via writing. And then it's the email that I've been sending people.
Did, did we lose you?
No, I just, I was just seeing if you, I was just letting you look at it and just, it's one, it's, I wasn't gonna read the whole email. But it's the one I've been sending to people that says, the Appointments Committee will be meeting on insert date, time, location, and virtual include a link. And I'm meeting, we vote on whether to recommend confirmation of your appointment to the full city council. In order for us to learn more about you and your interest in the committee, we ask that you respond to the following questions. You may do so in writing as a reply to this email slash letter, or by attending our meeting and talking with us. And it's got the three questions. And then it says, we may ask you follow-up questions to learn more. We welcome the opportunity to meet you and hear about your desire to serve the city. It is not required that you attend our meeting, nor should it affect our vote. Thank you for your interest and willingness to serve the city of East Hampton. And then I wrote down here, this is, continues my letter to the city council. We believe this process will create transparency and consistency, provide the candidate with an understanding of the process, allow the freedom to ask questions of the candidates within a defined outline, provide the Appointments Committee with the information needed to make a decision. And then I put the Appointments Committee. But Erica and I voted on this change. Um, but you're here now, so you know, I can open that back up, I guess. Not sure the, and this would go to the Rules Committee, by the way. So it's not like it's, I think it goes up and then back down to Rules.
That would be, uh, helpful, I think.
I wasn't gonna ask for a vote on it. I was gonna ask for it to be sent to Rules.
Right. I, I, I guess I have no, I, I, at this point, I don't have an objection to sending it to Rules. I just wonder if, as we talk about being open and transparent and clear to everybody, if, if it gives everyone the same freedom to describe, to, to, to describe themselves. Where we're asking people to appear, some people will feel comfortable appearing, others won't, others will feel comfortable speaking, and others will feel comfortable in written responses. I'm just trying to think through of certain, of, of, of everyone's ability to be a member of a committee and to participate in ways that, 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 that are, that are helpful and are not discriminatory in any way.
Well, we could, um, we could, um, so we give them the option to come in person or answer in writing. We could add another option that is to, um, to, uh, like, talk to a member of the council, of the Appointments Committee on the phone prior, like a, but I don't know.
I just, but we don't want to put up barriers. And, and so I'm, those are my thoughts and.
Yeah, I agree. I don't want barriers either.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not, uh, fully formulated and.
So I think there's time, like, there's a starting point, and then we send it to Rules and we can keep thinking on it. I, I, what I, what I liked in this, so like, I wouldn't know if this had to be a rule change, but I don't know where else to leave documentation for the committee, you know, because it's like, every appointment chair comes in and it's like, okay, well, I guess I'll call people. I'll do this, I'll do that. And what I've found from sending these letters is the feedback has been so great from the appointees. Like they're so happy to get it. They're so happy to understand the process. Cause I've heard in the past from people on our committees and boards, they really don't know what happened. Like they put their name in and then they're like, you know, they get a call. So, so yeah, so but I totally agree. I don't want to have any barriers. So that's why at first I had email and I said, well, what if someone doesn't have email? So I added, or postal mail. And I said, either in person or via writing. Um, I would definitely think like if for there's some reason, you know, they couldn't attend because they, you know, had something to do at that time or whatever, and they couldn't write, didn't feel comfortable writing. They could maybe, you know, have a conversation with someone on the Appointments Committee who takes notes and presents it to the, the council, the committee, that, that would be another accommodation.
Right. So I'll, I'll, I'll be giving it some more thought. And go from there.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just write in the beginning of this letter too, that we, that, because I didn't make that clear, that this is, that we'd like this to be put into the Rules Committee for further discussion. Does that make sense?
I, I, I certainly think it makes sense, yes.
That's what I was thinking anyways. I just hadn't written it yet, so. All right. And then, um, do we have to, well, I guess the next meeting we could, if this is taken away, then we can, do we vote to remove it from our agenda now? Is that how it works? Or does the main council vote to remove it from our agenda?
I don't, the main council votes to remove. It wouldn't be removed until it was either disposed of or brought back to, I mean, brought, brought back to the council. So I would leave it to the full, to make the, I, I wouldn't make any recommendations to remove. Yes, but we can. Certainly feel comfortable, I think, to report back and ask that it be moved further to rule.
Okay. You know, I was thinking, I was thinking like, even when we can meet in public again, I kind of really like the Appointments Committee meeting on Zoom because I don't think as many candidates would come to our meeting if they had to drive somewhere. You know, it's certainly like at two o'clock, you know, Scott could just come in from his office and it's just, it, it's really nice. I feel like it's really nice to meet the people that are serving in the city, because it, it just helps us like know, like, oh, we can, oh, remember if something comes up about disability, we're like, oh, we know Angelique and Kate now, because we've seen them. You know, it's, it's just a really nice, um, community building feeling, I feel like.
I thought that there had been a proposal that we could meet remotely.
Yeah, there is, there is. So if that goes through, I would want this committee to stay online.
I wouldn't have any, any, any difficulties with that.
Yeah. Cause it, like, I think it does reduce barriers for people coming. Let's make a motion to end the meeting, so that I can check in with you. And I second that, we're all in favor.